And it is seven oh one, President Siegler. Yes, I believe, did everyone else just hear President Siegler for a moment? No?
No.
Can you, can you hear me?
Now we can.
Now we can, okay. I don't know why, but. That's a good thing, right, that you can hear me? Um, okay, I assume we're ready to call the meeting to order. Sorry for the delay, my computer microphone and speaker are offline for some reason. Um, anyway, I'd like to call the May third meeting to order, it's currently seven oh six. Uh, we're meeting here today, uh, due to an abundance of caution over the COVID pandemic. It looks like the second thing on the agenda is approval of the agenda, but do we need to do a roll call attendance? Mr. Smith, can you do that?
Yes, Manager Crafton, roll call.
Here, present.
Manager Duval.
Present.
Andrew Cook.
Present.
Manager Pedersen.
Pedersen, I'm here.
President Siegler.
Present.
Very good, all managers present.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Um, are there any motions with regard to the agenda?
Uh, Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
Um, I request that all of the items under the consent agenda be moved to the action items. And then I would also move that we take item E, excuse me, D, under the action items and move that as our sole consent agenda item.
So everything else is action, you want to move to action?
That's correct.
Just wait your turn.
Are there any other requested changes or revisions to the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
Uh, also move, that hasn't already been moved.
I'll second.
Okay, um, Manager Cook moved to approve the agenda as amended, and Manager Pedersen seconded. Any more discussion on the agenda? During none, can we have a roll call vote, please, Mr. Smith?
Andrew Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duval.
Yes.
Andrew Cook.
Yes.
Andrew Pedersen.
Yes.
President Siegler.
Yeah.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is matters of public interest. Welcome to the board meeting, anyone may address the board on any matter of interest in the watershed. Speakers will be acknowledged by the president. Uh, please come to the podium, state your name and your address for the record. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Additional comments may be submitted in writing. Generally, the Board of Managers will not take official action on items discussed at this time, but may refer the matter to staff for further report or direct that the matter be scheduled on a future agenda. And Administrator Jeffrey had told me we had one person, Mr. Melby, and he's submitted some stuff in advance. And Barry and I agreed to give him ten. Mr. Melby, if you want to start off. I cannot hear you, no.
Now can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I can hear you now.
You want me to proceed?
Yes, so there was information that was attached or sent by Administrator Jeffrey fairly recently. You should have all received. Mr. Melby, go ahead.
All right, um, uh, the, the order that I'm going through, it starts out with a two thousand and three report by the consultant to the city, SRP. And in that, and I'm just going to say, you should read it, just read the material, it gives a little history and then a prediction. And, and, and the last paragraph, the bluff topography, vegetation, and aesthetics are currently jeopardized by encroaching development. Well, that started apparently back in oh three. Second one is a, is a letter that I wrote to the watershed district in December, on December twenty nine, twenty one. And I just quoted Wayne Cordes, who was the watershed section manager. And he says water is a reflection of the land around it. And that's what I'll be trying to address as we go through this. Um, there is an I Tree ecosystem analysis, a Noble Hill inventory that, that you have in front of you, and I want to chat a few items on it. This was something that I, I came back from a meeting and I Googled trees, and this, this I Tree for some analysis came up on, on the screen. And I, and I reviewed all the information about the program. It's a US Forest Service program and it's used worldwide and it's, and it's compatible with novices like me when it comes to working and putting information, so the Noble Hill tree inventory fit perfectly with the I Tree program. They wanted three things to be encoded, the diameter of the trunk, the type of tree, and um, well, I gotta, I gotta forget that, yeah, I'm, I'm beyond that. So anyway, we, Tecky and I inputted the information into the program and then downloaded it and printed the report, and you see the same report that I see. And I just want to take it to page two. Uh, you see pollution removal. Uh, I, I knew that trees sequestered carbon. Um, I wasn't sure about storing it, but I certainly didn't know about that they remove pollution, five hundred seventy two point six pounds a year. So it stores carbon, it sequesters carbon, it produces oxygen. It avoids, there's avoided runoff of twenty point twenty eight thousand cubic feet. Um, that's what they do, so in, if you remove these trees, you're going to have to deal with twenty point twenty eight thousand cubic feet of surface water. Uh, well, then at the bottom, it says replacement value, that's on the trees. Um, the five hundred forty two thousand, so the trees have some intrinsic value. And but with all of the other components, the total value of, of the environmental value of these trees is five hundred and ninety four thousand four hundred and thirty seven dollars and fifty cents. I think at this point, um, I've given you a general introduction to what the I Tree program does, and it quantifies the environmental value of these trees. Then, I wrote to another, 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 well, look at, there's a one, one paper that says Eagle Crest and Henford Village with platinum number. Uh, that's a development that sits on the east boundary of Noble Hill or the Standles property, and it consists of five hundred and fifty units. Uh, I have no information and, as to what surface water drains towards the Noble Hill property from, uh, Henupand Village. I suspect there's some. Then I wrote another letter to you on April twelve. One. We talk about the five hundred ninety four thousand four thirty seven, and then it says we. Well, that was with the city's certified arborist. He and I sat down and looked at twelve randomly selected upstream residential developments to determine the number of significant inherited trees that were removed. And a significant tree is from ten inches to thirty two, heritage is above thirty two inches in diameter. Now, when we looked at those twelve subdivisions upstream, um, the number of trees that were removed is twenty five thousand one hundred and seventy three. Now, that's seventy times the three hundred and fifty seven trees that are scheduled for removal on Noble Hill. The total value of those trees is forty one million six hundred and ten dollars. The, I go down to that paragraph, third from the last, it says that there's twenty point twenty eight cubic feet of water um, that is captured by these trees, the three hundred and fifty seven trees. And it's, and if those trees are removed, the watershed district has to somehow incorporate that twenty point twenty eight cubic uh, feet of water. Now, the other thing is that when you look at, when you look at the twelve upstream developments, you're looking at, you're going to have to deal with a hundred, a hundred and forty one thousand nine hundred and sixty cubic feet of water. I think it made ground, but, um, anyway, um, let me go on then, to then, I want to, I want to look very quickly at, at the information that you had when you made a decision relative to granting, um, the permit for, um, Pulte, Noble Hill project. I, minor typo, and there's a typo on page one, two, there's two of them, it says twenty fifteen. And while that's not the permit number, it's twenty twenty one. Um, a twelve, I'm sorry, oh, twelve. And then the word fall is for, uh, now, in, in the report on page three, it says that this sits on the thirty two acre site. And similarly, down the page, it says thirty one point ninety eight acres. I don't know where that came from, it's wrong, it's incorrect. Um, the Standles property is twenty seven point fifty two acres, so you got to make some adjustments on, on what the information is you're reading when you made, when you approved the permit. It's got one parcel of three point sixteen acres, you have this in your package too. And one parcel of fourteen point thirty six and one parcel of ten acres. So I just want to clear that up. It also, um, changes the, um, impervious service, impervious surface calculation. You have less here, so it will, it will, uh, result in more impervious surface. I think I went all the way to the back of this document. Well, I'm on page nine. You talk about an abstract value of twenty five thousand eight hundred and ninety nine cubic feet. That had to deal with the impervious surface, um, on the Noble Hill project. It's going to change, so you got to make a change on it because of the, what I just described. And, um, the upstream, well, let me put it this way, the only thing I see in, in your deliberations on this is the, uh, impervious surface of Noble Hill. There is nothing that indicates that you have taken into consideration the twenty point twenty eight cubic thousand, twenty point twenty eight thousand cubic feet that, that are consumed by the trees on the Noble Hill site. And I
Thank you, Mr. Duval, you're running out of time, do you have a?
All right, let me just go on, if there's in, at the last page, on page fifteen, note this, that the Asbeld drawings and the engineer has to, um, has to comply with protecting the public health, welfare, and safety. Now, I think when you start looking at the, the tree removal on, um, Noble Hill and upstream, that's going to be a criteria that, that no, no, no one can comply with. So, um, there's other things. I, I'll let you go through those documents and, um, and get familiar with just how important trees are in the landscape, and, um, haven't done a very good job over the last twenty years protecting our urban forest. And so it's, at this point in time, I'm pointing out to you how important they are, and I hope you reconsider granting that permit, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Melby, is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak tonight? Okay, hearing none, um, I'm sure we're going to have some shortly, if not, I don't believe it's coming tonight, but
If you, if you need, if you need me, I'm available.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next item on the agenda is a reading and approval of the minutes. The first set of minutes is the minutes for the April twelfth regular meeting of the Board of Managers. Do we have any motions regarding, uh, the April twelfth minute? We have motion to approve now?
I would like to move that we approve the minutes, however, um, there are a number of comments within the minutes that I, I guess I don't feel are an accurate description of what happened at the meeting. So I'm unsure at this point how I go about, uh, saying that I think the minute should be accepted as written without the comments.
I think you can make that motion.
Okay.
Prove the minutes without the comments.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Um, we have discussion on this item.
Oh, Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
Well, this is, I don't know how many times I've said this, I'll repeat it again. Uh, when, uh, Manager Ward was president, uh, we had agreed to adopt a process for approving these minutes. And that process, in my recollection, is, uh, requiring everybody to provide their comments. They're supposed to be condensed into one version and done in a way to, uh, uh, so that everybody could see those and be included in the package, so we wouldn't be wasting time, you know, going through uh, these, but, uh, since nobody else has followed that process, then, uh, well, let's put it this way, I think we should be following that, that process and therefore there shouldn't be any debate, and, uh, you know, if you didn't make your comments, then, you know, your time has passed. So. And I, in any event, uh, you know, my comments, you know, are part of the record, and, uh, and I expect to be included in this package of this meeting.
Okay, I believe they were included in the meeting package, but, uh, you don't always have as much detail, you know.
Well, also, excuse me, I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt you, I just had a public comment.
So we don't always have, well, certainly we don't have comments from every manager on every topic, but then he's gone to the point.
Well, the other, if, I'm sorry, if I may, just two more comments. You know, it, it says in our bylaws that the secretary is supposed to be reviewing the, the minutes and providing this, and I'm going to take it that that has not been happening, and I think that needs to be happened. And at a minimum, somebody needs to proofread these minutes before they go out to us. And because we shouldn't be spending time with, uh, you know, typos, et cetera, and this has been a, a recurring, uh, you know, issue, and the other issue that I have is, is, and I've made a motion before that we should find a different recorder because the recorder is interjecting uh, the recorder's commentary that is not part of the actual verbiage that was spoken during the meeting. So I think we need to go and start looking for somebody else, uh, to be our recorder or get the quarter, recorder to agree, they are to, you know, transcribe what's there, not to insert their comments as to their feelings um, about the, what happened at the meeting.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that, I believe that Pat is looking for a person to, you know, interview people that could take over the um, taking the meeting.
President Siegler.
Manager Crafton.
Could you speak up? I can't, I can barely hear you.
I'm sorry, I moved my phone away from. Is that better?
A little bit, yep.
Okay, I'll hold it right here, is that better?
Definitely. Thank you.
Okay, um, yeah, so are there any other comments on the, the meeting notes?
Oh, oh, Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
You know, I do expect that, uh, many of these notes, although maybe I, you know, next time I'll try to be specific, but they are questions that I have um, and follow-up that I've requested, and I would expect, you know, a response from the administrator uh, with respect to my notes, and I'll have comments on, further comments on the process later, so. I, I'm finished, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, are there any other comments from any of the other managers? Mr. Smith, can we have a roll call vote on accepting the April twelfth regular meeting minutes?
Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duval.
Uh, point of order, can I ask one question in the middle of this, so? Mr. President.
Uh, Manager Duval.
So are we accepting the minutes? With?
Right, for the April twelfth meeting, for the portion that was on April twelfth, I believe.
But with, with Manager Cook's comments.
Without Manager Cook's comments.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Manager Cook.
A point of clarification, I assume we are going to be including the change on, it's not a comment, but line seven sixteen and seven seventeen.
Um, Pat, can you pull that up? I can't see it.
Specifically, it, it inserts the specific, uh, property that we discussed in the closed session, which I believe is a requirement, um, under the open meeting law. Seven sixteen, seven seventeen.
Mr. President.
Mr. Smith.
Uh, the requirement of the open meeting law is for the agenda and the motion going into closed session to identify the property discussed. And I believe earlier in the minutes, that's there, I think on the previous page.
Yep.
While we're at it, I think there should be one more zero in the PID number, but in my view, that, yeah, tend to
I'm sorry, Mr. Smith, can you verify what your, the correction you're asking for?
The proper ID number, when it says zero zero five, I think there should be three zeros.
Thank you, so, um,
I have no objection to those amendments to my, uh, motion.
I don't either.
Thank you, Manager Crafton. Okay, were there any other questions, or can we continue our roll call vote?
I have, Mr. Person.
Thank you. Mr. Smith.
It's, I'll, I'll vote yes.
Andrew Pedersen.
Yes.
President Siegler.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the, uh, approval of the minutes of the April twentieth work session of the Board of Managers. Do we have any motions on this item?
I'll move, accept the, uh, minutes as written, I did not see any comments on this.
Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
Even though, I'll say that it, the move to amend the motion, uh, and make a change on page six. I, I believe that item C, line eighty six, should read something to the effect of, at ninety nine fifty five and ninety eight seventy five, Spring Road, Eden Prairie, and parcel with PID number, et cetera. There, there's actually three parcels, so I believe it should be red and parcel with PID, et cetera.
And I have no objection to that amendment.
And I, I have, uh, if I can, I have two other small changes. Line ninety
I'm sorry, Manager Cook, before we move on, is there three zeros before the five?
Thank you.
Mr. Smith is saying, yes, it should be three zeros.
Good catch.
Manager Cook.
Uh, yes, and then on line ninety five, it says at, and then it says PM, but we don't Uh, yes, and then on line ninety five, it says at, and then it says PM, but we don't have a time. And so I move that that be inserted after a review of the record by the. Secretary or district administrator, and then I further move that. Uh, online. Hi. This is Manager Cook, I did.
Okay, I just didn't hear, um, on page three, line seventy six. Um, it says that seconded by Manager Crafton carried five zero, but if you look at the votes. It was one no, so it's four one.
Okay.
I would agree to that.
That's pardon?
Me as well.
That's all I had. Sorry.
So I, sorry to do this, but um. Can we scroll back up to the top? I believe, uh, like line one. So line one, it says President Ziegler adjourned the continuation of the meeting, I believe that's called to order. Is that acceptable to?
Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duval.
Yes.
Yes.
Manager Pedersen.
Yes.
President Ziegler.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, thank you, uh, the next item on the agenda is uh. Committee reports. Um. The acceptance of the Citizen Advisory Committee report in minutes.
President Ziegler.
Yes.
Did we do the workshop? Work section minutes?
But it's the last work session minutes, we need to approve the minutes for President Ziegler. Item four C.
Okay, that's not showing up on my, I printed the agenda ahead of time. So, yes, please.
I'll move, we accept the April twentieth Board of Managers' work session minutes.
A second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Do we have any comments on this item?
Well, Mister President.
Manager Cook.
If, you know, my comments are, you know, I, this has happened on several items. You know, the the packet needs to be complete on Friday night, that's what our bylaws say. Um, I know I'm not the only one, we we have day jobs and things to do. And can't be wondering when uh, various items end up being posted. Uh, if I look at it once and items are not posted and then. You know, it's not always provided that there's been an update today, I know that this morning. Uh, there was an email, but, you know. That late hour I don't have, or was it yesterday was the email, but don't have the time to jump into things on uh. You know, on short notice, so I think we need to comply with our our bylaws. And make sure that the packets are complete and. And finished and. At the Friday before.
Thank you, um. I'm a little lost here, we had a motion and a second. Is that correct? Any further discussion from any other managers? Hearing none, uh, can we have a roll call vote, Mister Smith?
Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duval.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
Cook staying.
Manager Pedersen.
Yes.
President Ziegler.
Yeah.
Motion carries four to zero with one extension.
So were there any other items, or are we on to item five committee reports?
Committee reports.
Okay. So the item A is accept the Citizen Advisory. Uh, committees report in minutes. Do we have a motion on this item?
President Ziegler, I'll, I'll move that.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion before we vote on accepting the uh, CAC report?
Uh, Mister President.
Manager Cook.
Uh, is this accepted, it's including the resolution that was. Again, we have a, we have a late date issue here. And secondly, is this going to, is this covering the resolution?
I don't believe it covers the rev- resolution, I don't see on my agenda where we get the report from the citizens. The verbal report from the Citizens Advisory Committee. Um, but I expect we should add that in. Under eight A, or yeah, five, five A prime or something. Um. Or we could just wait until after we get a verbal report. And the discussion on the motion that the. CAC had made. Before we vote on this.
Oh, Mister President.
And the CAC with us?
Yes.
Okay. Manager Cook, you were going to say something?
Uh, well. Yeah, I I agree with you, Mister President, I would move that we have the report. And after the report, we decide what we want to, uh, but accepting not only the minutes, but the report. And also regarding the resolution.
Do we have a second for that motion? That gets us. That covers the fact that we didn't have a separate item. In the agenda.
Uh, I'll second, that's fine.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. To um. Uh, delay voting on accepting the. The minutes until after we get, we hear from our CAC representative and review the. Motion that they made. Mister Smith, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duval.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
Yes.
Pedersen.
Yes.
President Ziegler.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Um, I. Saw the person a second ago from the CAC, um, and I didn't, I didn't write down her name.
It's Bonnie Nelson.
Bonnie, can you uh, give us the uh, CAC report and help explain the motion a little bit?
Oh, right now, we're gonna do that?
Yeah.
All right. Um. Well, the the CAC, there's a group of people who were looking for. A subcommittee to work on kind of an opportunity for hands-on work. And outreach and basically connecting the the watershed district with opportunities within. Different cities within the watershed that already had more formal groups. So it's, I, at this point in time, it's mostly going to be an outreach effort, and I've talked to Liz and we could. Have, you know, the existing website could accommodate putting in some outreach. To just basically better communication within the watershed of what activities are going on in the different communities. And connecting people that might be interested. I think that's where we are for now, we're not looking at buying any additional, this does not authorize any additional use of funds other than, and. Staff work other than what's already normally part of outreach and working with the Citizens Advisory Committee. That's what the resolution is intended to say. That's what we believe it says, so.
Okay. Thank you, uh, do managers have questions or comments?
Yes, Mister President.
Manager Cook.
Um. Let's put it this way, I I think the idea of having a a group. Um. I, maybe liaison is the better word, I don't know how it was explained just now, but the. Resolution is is much broader than that and. Um. I would like to, you know, remind the advisory committee that they're governed by Minnesota statute one oh three cap D point three three one. And they have a specific purpose and specific duties. And my understanding is the general rule is. Uh, when the legislature draws a box and a governmental entity stay within the box. And I'm concerned that if this involves. Um, any type of, uh. You know, work activities, et cetera, are not otherwise described under duties and purposes are going outside the box. And that would not be appropriate for the advisory, uh, the Citizens Advisory Committee. Uh, there could always be a separate ad hoc committee of citizens. To do what they want to, but the reason I raise that concern is, one, it doesn't fall within the statute as I read it, number two. And there's some issues of liability. In question of whether or not uh, the district insurance would cover any of those activities. Uh, you know, by the Citizens Advisory Committee, um, and that. Before they do that, I think it would be good to make sure that we have some insurance coverage, or if we don't, we we know that. Um, you know, I've worked with a a number of groups where people engaged in activities and. All of them that I've been involved in. Um. In particular, I think the. Maybe the gold standard habitat for humanity, everybody signs waivers before they engage in activities. Uh, by that group, uh, so that it doesn't, uh. It doesn't come back, uh, and pose a potential liability for the district. So I would. I I think that those items should be looked into by legal counsel, by our administrator with respect to liability insurance. And that, uh. You know, a way that recommend that the CAC, he certainly work on waivers and this should be an ad hoc. I believe committee of volunteers and not per se a part of the CAC. To the extent it would be engaged in any activities of. Uh, you know, doing. Site work or anything like that.
President Ziegler. Um, Bonnie Nelson. And perhaps the resolution needs clarification, the. It is not the intent of the group at this point to become a. A group that is organizing activities, but more connecting us to already. Activities are already organized by, like Minnesota Minnetoka Parks or the city of Chanhassen that you sign up with. And they have the waivers and liabilities and are doing that, it's more of a. Outreach and a connection, is that what we're looking at, because it's hard to know what's going on within the watershed? So there is nobody at this time who's interested in organizing events themselves. President Ziegler.
Manager Crafton.
Yeah, I attended that meeting and I I think this is a great idea, but I wanted to comment on, um. So as, uh, I contacted Bowser about the CAC and, um. Discretion with what, you know, what what they want to do, so what I was told was that. It's our, in our discretion how they want to operate, what we want to approve, so. Um, it's not like there's a box out there that's just. They have to fall into, it's at the discretion of the Board of Managers as to how. How they proceed and how we want, what we want the purpose to be and what we want them to do, so. I think this is a valiant effort to get out and. Cut buckthorn and do all kinds of things that will benefit the watershed district, so I. I'm strongly in for, in support of this, but. It, what they do is at our discretion, so it's not like there's some statute that. Pro- proclaims them from doing this.
Mister President.
Manager Cook.
I'll do expect, I don't know who was spoken to at Bowser, but I question. Uh, the advice or statements that were made, uh, in that regard. And, uh. You know, unless they want to send us a legal brief. And it's not true that there isn't any statute, there is a specific statute. And, uh. The law is pretty clear, if you have statutory authority, that's what you get to do. You know, I, we don't get to go and write statutes for the state of Minnesota, we don't get to judge. Cases in the state of Minnesota, that's why you have boxes and those boxes are drawn by the legislature for some to Minnesota constitution. So people getting loose. And free and loose with what they think they can do in an organization, you know, is dangerous. And certainly without the appropriate safeguards, the ones which I already mentioned. So I would be happy to, if I could get the name of the person at Bowser and talk to them myself and find out where they're grounded at. But it might be better for somebody like maybe Mister Smith or the district administrator. To, uh, to follow that up. I believe saying that you do anything, it's a very dangerous precedent.
Mister Smith, do you want to chime in on this?
Yes, uh, Mister President, managers, two comments, um. The, there is a statute that provides for the establishment of this Citizen Advisory Committee. And it provides that the committee is to advise and assist the managers on all matters affecting the interests of the watershed district. And make recommendations to the managers on all contemplated projects and improvements in the watershed district. Um, that is a pretty broad, uh, charge. And I think that is valuable to have dialogue between the board and the CAC about. Where the CAC's advice is, you know, the the most helpful and effective, so. Um, that can be a very broad charge, but it also is focused on rendering advice. Uh, to the district. The, um, concern I have with the resolution, I I think the spirit of. Sharing information about volunteer opportunities to do environmental stewardship work. In the various communities of the watershed. Is an effective or can be a valuable thing, I think the distinction between whether or not this is a sponsored activity. Whether or not there's an entity being created called Friends of the Watershed. Those things deserve, I think, some more review. Um, and so, uh, and there also is an insurance issue if. The district is soliciting volunteers to undertake activities on behalf of the district. I don't understand that's what being suggested by Ms. Nelson, but I think the resolution is a little ambiguous about that and. Um. We could just follow up and clarify some of those things.
Yeah, President Ziegler. I I agree, I think it needs clarification that, sorry, I didn't wait for you to acknowledge me. Um, that by calling us friends of, friends of the watershed district, it makes you believe that we're on a par with. The organization of Friends of Minnetoka Parks and other nonprofit and more. Organized groups, so perhaps. We could, we could rethink, I think the resolution could use some more work in that regard to be clear about what our intentions are. It's more of an outreach group, I would say at this point in time, a coordination.
Uh, Mister President.
Manager Cook.
Uh, I would, I would certainly encourage the CAC to. Uh, take another look at the resolution and. Try and make sure that it's tailored to, uh, what they intend to be accomplished by this and also take into account. Uh, the comments by Mister Smith. Uh, as as appropriate, so, but I, I don't, I don't want to stop anybody from doing good things, that's not my. It's just, who does it under whose name, that's.
Understood, understood.
My concern, I want everybody to do good things, I don't, please don't. Read, uh, something into what I say that I don't intend, I just want to make sure that. We dot our i's and cross our t's, so everybody is taken care of. And there's no. And there's no mistake as to who does what or if there's coverage, et cetera. So, but then thank the CAC for wanting to engage in that type of interaction. I think that's a great idea.
President Ziegler may I comment?
Manager Patterson?
So having been on the CAC for quite a while myself, I realize that many of the members the fact that they come to a meeting once a month isn't really the funnest thing in the world for them. And what many of them want to do is to be actively involved, and that means boots on the ground and gloves on the hands and being out and seeing things. And I think we make a much funner and much all more all inclusive place when we actually have them where we can't, you, I, most of our managers here can't actually be out there all the time. But they can and we can hear what they have to say about what they're seeing. So I in no way want to discourage them from moving ahead with an initiative like this. I think it's great. I think clarifying what's an activity we sponsor and if it's insured by us, we do have Liz Forbes, who, you know, I'm assuming is going to be looking at some of this stuff. I can't imagine she wouldn't say you know, that maybe is kind of on the boundaries of maybe we shouldn't do that. You know, I think there's going to be some discussion and oversight for this. So if they want to go back and kind of clarify it, maybe work with Mr. Smith to come up with a cleaner resolution, I'm all for it. But please don't be discouraged because really I think this is a great thing. I mean, I've watched Sharon McCotter, for example, work out on Adopt a Drain for many communities volunteered, gone out there, gotten people to help. I think that's benefited us. She's been out there and talked to people and got more people involved. And that's how I see this group. So I'm very appreciative and I think it's, I think it's a great idea.
Mr. President? I agree, but I think like Manager Cook and Mr. Smith said, we need to kind of tweak the proposal and make sure we're all in agreement that it's a separate group, not a subgroup. But and I, like you know, I've been on the CAC for a long time and been to a lot of Sharon McCotter's events to clean up the streets in the fall before the days get all into the lakes and so on, so. And then also on buckthorn poles with regards to the school up in Minnetoka and planting events, things like that, so. But there was always some kind of disclosure. You know, a waiver, I guess is a better word, that you had to sign.
President Ziegler?
Manager Crafton?
I guess I just wanted to make one more comment. We've been really appreciative of the CAC and all the things they do. And one of the things that we've done that's different than many other watershed districts, I think, is we've encouraged our CAC members to attend what used to be the mod meetings and learn and be educated. And you know, if they're interested, they want to learn. I know for at one point they were reaching out to other citizen advisory committees and so share ideas, so. We've encouraged them to be proactive, so I don't think that's out of the realm of of what we've wanted from the CAC, at least not, I haven't, I thought that was a good idea.
Thank you. So can someone word the motion? We keep the motion and the second in a form that we're happy with, Manager Cook?
Well, I would I would move that we authorize Mr. Smith and the district administrator to confer with the CAC as to exactly what the CAC proposes to do, if anything, whether it be under the guise of the CAC or the Friends of the Watershed to make sure that the district is protected as appropriate from liability, including insurance and to basically report back to us as to their findings.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I guess I'd like to make a minor modification in that they report back to the CAC and work through to try and come up with something that works.
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment if somebody wants to second it.
So I did second. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Manager Devol? Oh, you unmuted yourself.
I'm good.
Okay. Can we have a roll call vote, please, Mr. Smith? Can you hear me?
Not sure.
No?
We can hear, I can hear you. President Ziegler, Mr. Smith, he's asking for a roll call vote.
Oh. Manager Crafton?
Ah, yes.
Manager DuVell?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Andrew Patterson?
Yes.
President Ziegler?
Yeah.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, so we've accomplished ask A, you need to confirm who's going to be attending the May fifteenth CAC meeting from the board?
I volunteered for that.
Okay. Good. Okay, the next thing is to receive the Personnel Committee report.
We had no Personnel Committee meeting this month.
Okay, so no report.
Right.
Okay, next item is to receive the Governance Committee report, and I believe the minutes for the committee meeting were attached to the board packet.
I mean, we accept the minutes of the Governance Committee report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the Governance Committee reports. We have any comments or questions?
Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
Well, I have some issues with some of the items that were discussed on that basis, but I'll just forward this to the committee chair, but my big issue is that these minutes, excuse me, these meetings, I do not believe are compliant with the open meeting law in that a copy of the documents and the documents to be discussed or covered are not being posted and available to any person, member of the public during the meeting. And I don't believe that scrolling through as they're being discussed is sufficient to meet the requirement to provide a, make a copy available of the document being considered. So that being said, I think the Governance Committee should heed the open meeting law and even if it wouldn't be required, I think, given the fact that we're doing Zoom, a copy of whatever documents are being discussed should be posted so that a person who wants to listen in would have a copy that they could be looking at the deliberations.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion before we do our roll call vote? We've had a motion and a second. During then, can we have a roll call vote, Mr. Smith?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager DuVell?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
This is on acceptance, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Andrew Patterson?
Yes.
President Ziegler?
Yeah.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, the last item on the committee reports, at least on my agenda, is the receive audit and finance committee report.
President Ziegler? We haven't met. We were hoping to meet in person to go over some of the charts and things we want to look at and it just a Zoom meeting doesn't seem to lend itself, so we have been waiting for an opportunity to meet in person.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
Could I, I'd like to, I have a question or two, just to ask the members of the committee pertaining to the audit.
Okay, go ahead.
My question only is, what stage is the audit? Has it been finished? If not, when does anticipate having the audit finished? Or I should say a draft presented to us for our review.
I haven't gotten an update on that. I don't know. Andrew DuVell has.
I have not either.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And I believe there was only one thing left in the consent agenda, which was item B, the April staff report. Is that correct?
Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
I thought I said that I was going to remove all of the items in the consent agenda, but then add to the consent agenda what is listed as item D under, is it seven or eight? Anyhow, the resolution pertaining to registration of the managers for Minnesota waters, et cetera. So my understanding of my motion was that the consent agenda was the one item, that being Resolution twenty-three dash oh three seven. If that's the case, I would move to adopt the consent agenda, listing that as the sole item.
President Ziegler?
Manager Crafton?
I'll second.
So can you repeat that? I guess I didn't follow the first time.
I'm sorry, Mr. President.
So which item, is it action item that you wanted?
Yes, it would be move action item D about the Resolution twenty-three dash oh three seven. Move that to the consent agenda and I move the adoption of the consent agenda with that one item. Resolution twenty-three dash oh three seven.
Approving of the bill.
Could you say what the resolution you're talking about is?
Well, maybe I have that wrong. It's the resolution to allow expending funds for Minnesota water functions.
I'm confused. I printed it out earlier and I don't have that resolution on my.
Okay, so President Ziegler, it's basically authorizing Terry to register we managers for the Minnesota Watershed Summer Tour. That's what it is.
Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
It's more expansive than that. It allows Mr. Jeffrey to register us for the annual meeting for the summer tour, and I believe there was one other item. I'm sorry, I don't have it up in front of me. So it was more than just the summer tour.
Also the legislative conference.
Correct. Yes, I can read it if you'd like, Mr. President. Authorizes administrator to expend necessary funds for registration lodgings and transportation for any manager wishing to attend any future annual meeting and conference, the legislative conference and the summer tour of the Minnesota Association of Watersheds.
So any future, that seems kind of broad. Can we do it for the remainder of the year or something?
President Ziegler, mine doesn't say that.
Mine doesn't either.
Mine doesn't either.
It's only to attend regularly scheduled Minnesota Association of Watershed. Well, it says events, but basically we're trying to get approval for this upcoming summer tour.
Mr. President?
Mr. Smith?
The resolution that I have says to expend necessary funds for registration lodging transportation for any manager wishing to attend any future annual meeting and conference. What legislative conference and summer tour, so it is quite broad. It's the one I have.
I know that.
I'm reading from the meeting packet. It's posted online.
I guess we probably need to have more discussion on that, so we probably should just scratch that from the consent agenda until till we get to it on the agenda, so we can hash it out a little more.
President Ziegler?
Manager Crafton?
I think this is a timing issue. He needs to get, we need to get the resolution or the reservations made. Can, so Council Smith, can we just change one word in this, strike events and make it the summer tour?
Just delete everything. Delete any future annual meeting and conference and delete the legislative conference which already passed. And just put the twenty twenty-three summer tour.
Yeah, I'd like to make that recommendation for the resolution.
I'll second.
Point of order, Mr. President.
Manager Cook?
You know, the consent agenda is to add items uncontroversial. If this is controversial, let's just not have a consent agenda and we'll just pick it up when we come to it.
Okay. I agree with that. I think I actually proposed that, but I think it is a time sensitive item, so let's keep it in the action items. And that means there's no no consent items left. And we start and go from the top down. Mr. Smith, where is this? This not item B? Authorized Administrator to Register Managers for Minnesota Watershed Summer Tour?
That item was eight D under action items, yes.
Okay, so that's where we'll handle it then.
Okay, correct.
So the action items, then the first action item is first consent, there are all of the consent items. And the first one is to adopt a resolution, will that be the consent agenda? So the first separate one is the April staff report, to accept the April staff report. Do we have a motion on this item?
President Ziegler?
Manager Crafton?
I'll move that we accept the staff report.
I'll second.
But what is the staff report?
It says reported in the packet.
Excuse me, who's? Yeah, point of order. I don't know who's interjecting what comments without asking to be recognized.
Manager Crafton?
Could somebody bring up the staff report so that it can be seen?
Mr. Soviak?
Working on it. Manager's able to see my screen now, with the staff report?
Thank you, Scott.
Okay, were there any specific questions on the staff report?
Uh, yeah, Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
Uh, I, I do have some, but for some reason um, having trouble pulling the right copy up. Bear with me one moment, please. Well, I had a number of questions, I don't know if anybody else has any, while I try to find this, uh, the staff report here.
President Ziegler?
Manager Crafton?
Yes, as long as we're waiting, um, I would just like to thank the staff, this report was so comprehensive, and they're working really hard on so many different levels, and I appreciate everything, I, um, the protection for wetlands, I think would have added a whole lot of integrity to the TEP TEP meetings and, um, and the education and outreach, I did, I think everybody's just doing an amazing job, so I just wanted to comment that.
Thank you. Manager Cook, did you find your?
Yeah, I, I, I apologize, I'm trying to figure out what happened to my copy of my staff report, maybe we could go to the you and mine going through the entry, although on the other hand, Mr. Jeffrey isn't here, I don't know if Mr. Sobeck is going to be in a position to answer some of my questions, even if I have them. I hate to put this off till the next meeting, because, um, my list may get long. Hey, perhaps, may I suggest that we, uh, amend the agenda and, and move to the engineers' report for now?
I have no problem with that. Do we need to vote on that?
President Ziegler?
Manager Crafton?
I thought we had a, I thought we had a motion and a second on floor.
For the? For the staff report, yes, I believe we did.
The, the board could move to lay it over, if that's their desire.
So, Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
So I, I moved to lay this, uh, discussion on the staff report until after the discussion of the engineer report.
Do we have a second? I'm hearing no second, uh, motion fails for lack of a second. Um.
May I call the question, President Ziegler?
Yes, you may. So calling the question would mean, let's, uh, end discussion and go to a vote.
Right.
So, do we need to have a vote on that, Mr. Smith, to close the discussion?
It would be a motion to close debate.
I'll second, a motion to close debate.
You're voting on something you haven't even seen?
We've already read it.
Well, of course, Mr. President.
I can't see everyone on my screen, I can't tell who's speaking.
I believe that might be Ms. Standall, who's commenting?
So Amy, can you mute everyone that's not a manager at this point? Or a staff person?
I have the ability to, um, not allow folks to mute and unmute some managers, if you want to unmute yourself, so that you're able to speak. I can then do that.
Manager Cook?
Uh, yes, um, I found my staff report. So I would like to delay the motion, and I can cover my questions.
Uh, okay, let's try and make it quick.
I'm sorry?
Let's try and make it quick, we, we've already talked about it, and haven't really talked about anything for about ten minutes, let's try and make it quick.
President Ziegler?
Manager Crafton?
I thought we were voting to to go ahead and accept the report, because that was the motion that was already out there, and then we were cutting off debate, or cutting off discussion, so we could vote on the question that was called.
You're absolutely correct, we had a, uh, we were gonna vote on, uh, closing the discussion and going to a vote.
Point of order, Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
Uh, a, a motion to cut off debate is out of order when a person has the floor, which I have the floor. Unless my time has expired, and my time is at least two ten-minute sessions. Pursued to the Roberts Rules of Order, which pursuant to our bylaws governs our meetings.
So in my recollection, you gave up the floor in order to move on. And?
I didn't give up the floor, I suggested that nobody said anything about doing that. Now, Ms. President Ziegler, do you really want to do this?
I would like to be done with this item, I've read it, I know that you've all read it, and, uh, I have no doubt that you have many questions on it. But, um, I don't know that we're gonna get the answers we want, as you pointed out, because Administrator Jeffrey is not here, we might be better served to move on to the engineering's report. Where we have the engineer here, who can answer questions.
Well, let me ask this, then, why isn't the administrator here, present?
Um, he had a family thing, and he does have a family that uses regular working hours. Um, and, uh, Mr. Sobeck is here in his place.
Is Mr. Sobeck stating he's incapable of answering these questions? That's not a dig, I just asked the question.
We never got to actually answer, ask any questions, because it's taken us a long time going in circles to get to the point where we were gonna just skip this and move on.
President Ziegler?
Uh, uh, Manager Crafton?
Okay, I'm getting confused, I thought we had a, a motion to accept the report, the staff report, and a second, and then we've had some debate about delaying it, but then that was that failed for lack of a second, and then you had a motion to close debate, and we were waiting for that vote, so that we could go ahead and vote on the motion that was already there. Is that not true, or?
That's absolutely true. So we have the motion to end the discussion on the floor with a second.
But, Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
What you're leaving out is the point of order. Can't cut the, the, the debate off. A, a member has at least two ten-minute sessions under Roberts Rules of Order. I have not used up my ten minutes, because I've not been speaking for ten minutes. The rest of all this is parliamentary, it's not my time. Can't use up my time, uh, that way. But if you would, if it would agree that I can cover this at the next meeting without the indwendo, then I would consent to lay this over to the next meeting.
Um, I believe at the next meeting, we'll have another staff report, then if we can combine the two, that would be efficient, at least.
Well.
If the same items are on the staff report every month.
Uh, well, Mr. President, as you know, at least, I, I, I'm sure you know, that it's different, different information every report. I, I was, uh, kind enough to, uh, lay over and not cover the staff report from the last month, because of the late hour. And I'm gonna have, uh, you know, two opportunities to cover this.
Uh, that's my understanding, is you'll be able to ask your questions on the staff report at the upcoming meeting. So that would be June meeting. So, um, you're saying we don't need to vote to end discussion, we can just move on to the, uh, engineers' report?
Well, Mr. President, I'm not, I'm not saying anything, you, you guys apparently have, you know, your own ideas of the parliamentary procedure.
Mr. Smith, can we have a vote to end discussion on the, uh, staff report, and go to a vote?
Andrew Crafton?
Yes.
Manager DuVell? Yes. Andrew Cook?
No.
Andrew Pedersen?
Yes.
President Siegler?
Yeah.
Motion to close debate carries four to one.
So, um, then we have a motion and a second to accept the staff report. Do we have a roll call vote on the staff report, accepting the staff report?
Andrew Crafton?
Yes.
Manager DuVell?
Yes.
Andrew Cook?
No.
Andrew Pedersen?
Yes.
President Siegler?
Yeah.
Motion carries four to one.
Okay, so the next item then is the engineers' report. Do we have any motions on the engineers' report?
And we, we accept the engineers' report?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion on the engineers' report?
Yes, Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
Uh, yes, under the permitting program, page two of five, item F, we're talking about the crew car wash. Um, maybe my directions are messed up, but the farmer Burger King, I believe, was in the southeast corner of the intersection. Not the southwest corner, so is this right, that we're, what, which corner are we talking about?
President Ziegler?
Yeah.
Manager Cook, it should be this southeast corner.
Okay, very good, thank you very much, I do read these. Uh, so I have, um, I have one other, two other items here. Um, and they do the task order zero four zero on page four of five, about the ALM application on Lotus Lake. Um, I take it that's, that's not finished, and my, but subpart of that is, is this memo gonna be talking about the results of testing, et cetera, and recommendations for treatment?
President Ziegler?
Yeah.
Manager Cook, that is correct, it's, it's to discuss the application and the potential future dosing of Lotus Lake.
Well, uh, thank you for that, but as I mentioned to, uh, Mr. Bishop at prior meetings, um, the, any analysis or discussion has to take into account the potential impact of wake boats, particularly given that, uh, I forget which one of our staff mentioned about the higher rates of, I believe, phosphorus release in some of the shallow areas. And, um, and I also mentioned this, because when I mentioned this, Mr. Bishop, um, my perception that he was surprised about wake boats, period. And I believe we had a short discussion about, uh, what they had, and I believe I suggested he looked to several studies, one of which I think is in the possession of the, uh, of the district, I think there's also another uh, subsequent, uh, study that's in the, should be in the possession of the district. So I encourage, uh, whoever's putting that memo together to look at those studies and, uh, make those part of the discussion and recommendations. So as to, um, I'm gonna skip down first to the, um, I guess you call it the CIP at the end. So first of all, overall, thank you very much for doing that, that's something that I think has been needed for a long time. Um, I've been able to study it in detail, but it looks exactly, uh, like something I would have um, I, I think I need to see, shows the progression and status of, of, of these various projects, I think that's excellent. Like to see that every month, but then I wanna back, jump back up to some of the task orders, and for example, one that jumps out is Task Order forty-three, uh, the Eco System Health Plan, uh, which has, if I re, looking at it again, had several parts to it. And I would like to see a similar, um, you know, it's, these aren't quite Gantt charts, in that they don't have dates to them, but a similar chart dealing with various task order, task orders, where there are several parts and several segments to that, so I'd like you to consider if that's something that the bar could do with the various task orders that have, you know, multiple parts, so uh, we can track where we are on each one of these, uh, these tasks orders. And, uh, it would also be helpful to me, and some of these task orders, some of them are obvious, you know, what they're about, some of them aren't quite so obvious. So anything you could do to add, um, some information, so we would, uh, be able to know exactly what we're, what we're talking about, or throw in a link or something like that, so if you need to, uh, refresh recollection about, uh, about the various task order, but, uh, kudos on the CIP. And with that, I'll relinquish the floor, as they say in Congress.
Do any of the other managers have questions on the engineers' report? Uh, Mr. Smith, can we have a roll call vote on accepting the, uh, engineers' report?
Andrew Crafton?
Yes.
Manager DuVell?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Andrew Pedersen?
Yes.
President Siegler?
Yeah.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, the next um, one I have is, uh, accepting the April regulatory program report. Do we have any motions on this item?
I'll move we accept the regulatory report.
I'll second.
Do we have a second? Okay.
Mr. DuVell, seconded, that's fine.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, I'm not sure who the second is, but all I heard was Joe Crafton.
I think it was Manager Pedersen.
I thought Manager Pedersen made the motion.
I did.
I'll second then.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments on the, um, regulatory program report?
Uh, yes, Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
Um, I don't know if, um, be able to, if Mr. Sobeck be able to answer any of the questions, but three I have, having to do with with Lotus Lake, and not necessarily familiar with the addresses that are listed, but, uh, there are with Lotus Lake and not necessarily familiar with the addresses that are listed, but, uh, there are, um, at least there are four items on Lotus Lake. Number one is the, uh, the, uh, property that is on Frontier Trail. Um, that had installed riprap and done landscaping, I believe, in excess of that permitted of the rules without a permit. And am I missing that? Uh? And it should be on Frontier Trail at least. And if not, I'd like to have, uh, be updated on the status of that. That's number one. Number two is I sent pictures, uh, et cetera, and a notice to Administrator Jeffrey. Believe it was probably in February of riprapping that was being done on, uh, about three houses to the west of the boat landing on Lotus. To my recollection, I've never received a response on that, and I don't recall of having there been a, a permit for that. Uh, but I'd asked questions and I have not received a response, uh, to that. Uh, third is I asked for the information having to do with the riprapping, et cetera, that was done on the southeast side of Lotus Lake that's been about maybe two years ago. And, uh, it was unclear to me how that, that was allegedly approved. I had, didn't have a recollection. I've asked for the information on that. I've not received that yet. Then finally over on, uh, I guess it would be Dakota, I think it's Dakota Avenue. I believe that's the last item, um, but I could be wrong. There, I know there was significant excavation going on on a lot. Over there, I sent that information over to Administrator Jeffrey. I did not receive the response from him, uh, regarding that, so um, I'd like responses on those four items.
President Siegler?
Yeah.
Uh, m- Manager Cook, um, start off with the southeast corner of Lotus Lake. That's the, uh, Eliasin property. Um, that permit and the after the fact permit was resubmitted and was approved by the board. I will look into getting you a copy of that, uh, approval. Um, with respect to the disturbance that was observed at, uh, seven ten Dakota Avenue, uh, staff Nicolay has been in contact with them, working with District Legal to issue a notice of probable violation for work without a permit there. Um, can you refresh my memory on the other two?
Um, there, on the south, southwest, uh, corner of, uh, the southwest corner of Lotus Lake. Um, in February, they were doing riprapping uh, on, I think it's like the third or fourth lot to the west from the landing. And I'd sent, uh, pictures, uh, notified Administrator Jeffrey and asked about it, but my recollection is I had not received any response. I didn't know if they had a permit or got a permit, et cetera. Um, and then, uh, there's the one down Frontier Trail of, you know, I don't know, six houses south of, of where I live, where they had done the extensive landscaping, riprapping, et cetera. Um, and I believe we, believe the district gets sent out a, what do you call it, an O P V uh, on that property, but I don't know that I see that listed.
So Manager Cook, I'll, I'll address the one in the southwest corner of, of Lotus Lake where you, uh, sent the photographs of the riprap maintenance that did occur. Uh, a notice of probable violation was sent to that property. Uh, since then, the owner, their contractor has submitted a, uh, for an after the fact permit application. It was deemed incomplete for lack of, uh, plan sheets and so forth, didn't provide enough information. Um, and Staff Nicolay is working with them to rectify that and get the appropriate information to allow for a review of that property. The one along Frontier Trail, um, I'll have to apologize, I'm not familiar with that, uh, notice of probable violation in any detail.
That, that's fine. So if somebody could get back to me on this or, or, you know, discuss it at the, the workshop. If that's appropriate, um. And then, uh, my last point is, is that on the regulatory, uh, program report. Um, I'd like to back now that we're talking about the administratively approved ones. That was something that I wanted to request and you've already done that. The, uh, the inspections, it says that there are twenty-eight, uh, permitted sites and there was fourteen required corrective actions, but I couldn't see that we received any detail on those. And I've, for one, would like to see the detail on the, uh, type of corrective actions, so we can see if there's some process we can do to try to avoid those violations, um, you know, including do we have permittees having to submit photos from designated locations, uh, one that would save time and effort and running around and to probably give us better information. Uh, so with that, that's, uh, I yield back.
Do any other managers have questions on the regulatory program report? Coming on, um, can we have a roll call vote, Mr. Smith?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Andrew Pedersen?
Is that a yes? Are you on mute?
Thank you. Yeah, somebody had to unmute me. The host had to unmute me.
President Siegler?
Yeah.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Um, let me see. Uh, next one was the uh, approved permit twenty twenty-three dash zero zero seven Southwest Village Retail as presented in the proposed board action section of the permit review report. Do we have any, uh, motions on this item?
I'll move the acceptance or, um, I don't know, approval, I guess, of permit twenty twenty-three dash zero zero seven for consideration.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, do we have comments, questions on this moment?
Uh, Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
Uh, I move to amend the motion, uh, to read that we adopt the proposed resolution set forth in the staff report regarding permit number two zero two three dash zero zero seven.
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment. Thank you.
That's fine.
Is there any other question or comment on this?
Yeah.
Um.
Yes, Mr. President.
Manager Cook?
Uh, but what, uh, the reason I pulled this and it jumped, uh, out at me was, uh, three things. One, if, if I understood it correctly, we have a governmental entity that's going to be building a, a, or building out a shopping location. And yet they don't have to pay any fees. And this strikes me as maybe that's it, but it shouldn't be. I think we should, you know, government should be able to, be able to do something that, uh, regular permittee, uh, you know, would have to pay for. I understand the roads and you, you know, maintenance and all that. I understand why there'd be no fee there. And maybe we can't require any fee, but it strikes me as a concern when a governmental entity is actually constructing a, a retail facility and they don't have to pay permit fees. And I don't know if Mi- Mr. Smith has any comments on that. My observations are probably correct. Maybe they can do that, but um, if, if it's, if it would be that we could change our rules going forward, I think that should be something we would consider. And then I have two other comments. Um, and so it has to do with, um, the maintenance agreement and the chloride, uh, management plan. Am I correct that we have, um, templates for chloride management plan?
President Siegler, manager Cook, that is correct.
Okay, then we would expect that they would probably be using that template at least to start with.
Correct.
And then similarly with, uh, the maintenance and inspection agreement, do we have a general template, uh, we recommend they start with?
That is correct. There's a template on the permitting webpage.
Okay, and we encourage them to start there, I assume.
Correct.
Okay. I don't know if Mr. Smith had any comment on that. On my, you know, surprise, I guess, that a governmental entity could get by with no permits when they're acting like a private citizen.
Mr. President, Managers and Manager Cook, I share, um, you, you know, being perplexed about, um, the, the posture of this, but the exemption from fees is to the nature of the applicant, and if the applicant is a municipal entity, that statute provides that they're exempt from watershed district fees. Um, I don't know if there's any further explanation about the posture that Mr. Sobek has. Um, but it, it, the exemption goes to the nature of the applicant, not the nature of the project.
President Siegler?
Mr. Sobek?
To add to what Mr. Smith was saying, I did have a in-depth conversation with Council Welsh as well around this topic. Um, I had those same concerns and Mr. Welsh, um, told me the same thing that Mr. Smith just said. It goes to the permit applicant, and in this case, the permit applicant is the Southwest, um, Transit Authority.
So, Mr. President, I have a follow-up, please?
Manager Cook?
Well, but so my question is, is can we change our, or change our rules so that the applicant has to be the owner of the fee simple? And, and, uh, and, you know, maybe in this case, it's still a government entity. But, um, I've always been concerned about an applicant being a developer, et cetera, and I, I have to say that our language in our rules, I've read it, but I, you know, I only read it once, not that familiar with, you, you know, with it, but it, it, it talks about, I think, the landowner is supposed to be part of it or not part of it, and maybe they sign or they don't sign, and I think that's something that we should look at nailing down because I think it's important that, uh, basically not only the fee owner, but also whoever's going to be doing the work or developing it should be on the application and be responsible. I yield.
Mr. President?
Um, yeah. Um.
I guess for Mr. Sobek, is, does this happen often?
President Siegler, Manager Duval, uh, to my knowledge, it has happened one other time since the regulatory program was reinstated in twenty fifteen.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions on the permit twenty twenty-three dash zero zero seven?
Oh, Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
So I didn't understand that we don't have a basis for objecting to this permit, given that according to the ears report, they, they will, if they construct it as per the plans, et cetera, they will be complying with their rules, am I correct? Then we don't have.
Mr. Sobek?
That would be my understanding. Maybe Mr. Smith has additional information to add.
Well.
Thank you. I yield.
Uh, any questions, uh, from other, other managers on this, or can we go to the vote? Do we have a roll call vote, Mr. Smith?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Andrew Cook?
Yes.
Andrew Pedersen?
He's nodding her head, but I think she muted again.
It'd be good for your recording.
Thank you.
President Siegler?
Yeah.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, um, on my copy of the agenda, that moves us to uh, the action items. Um, Mr. Sobek, is that what you're seeing?
That is correct. First item would be the acceptance of the March Treasurer's report.
Okay, do we have any, uh, motions on the March Treasurer's report?
President Siegler?
Manager Crafton?
I would like to, um, move that we accept the treasurer's report as submitted. It's been reviewed in compliance with our internal controls and procedures.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions on the Treasurer's report?
Uh, yes, Mr. President.
Manager Cook?
Um, i- if I could, um, so one question I, I'll start on the, on page one of four. The bottom, we have two visa payments. And were both of these approved by us at the last, last meeting? Or are they being approved at this meeting?
Yeah, they're being dispersed at this meeting.
Okay, that's that number one. Thank you for that. Um, so under the next page, two of, two of four, I still have the, the, the question of, well, several questions here, but, um, I believe we have a receivable from St. Hubert's. Is that reflected anywhere on this balance sheet?
It's probably rolled up in something, so I don't, um.
Well, I'd appreciate an answer to that, uh, when you have an opportunity. Uh, the next, uh, item I have in light of the, how the banking, uh, issues, uh, do we have assurances that, um, our four M, since we have six point four million dollars at the four M fund, that, uh, that is secure and not at any, uh, additional risk due to the current banking environment?
President Siegler?
Um, yeah.
Uh, Manager Cook, I believe that would be a, a question for Administrator Jeffrey, as he's the one who's tracking that information.
Uh, thank you. Uh, well, I would like to receive an answer on that. I think we all should have an answers to whether or not we have anything to worry about having six million. I have my doubts that we have a problem, but we'd probably be foolish not to verify that we don't have a problem. My next question is.
President Siegler? If, if I might follow up to Manager Cook's comment, I, I just pulled up some statements on the four M fund today. And my reading of that. And my reading of that, we we probably are at risk. That there's a lengthy page talking about the risks of the various funds that are that the fund invests in and. We're along with other governmental entities, where we're investing in. The top-notch governmental bonds as well as top corporate bonds. And but we're not covered by CI or CID. The two hundred fifty thousand dollar. Um governmental guarantee does not cover anything in that fund, from what I read.
Well, Mister President?
Manager cook?
Well, I I would certainly like to see the Audit and Finance Committee look into this and see if they have any recommendations. To us of any actions we should be taking to minimize our risk, that's awful lot of money to have at risk. And we never know when the government may not step in like they did with the. Uh, what was it Signature Bank and the other two banks now that have collapsed, so. Uh, I I would ask the the Audit Finance Committee to to look into that. If if they would, and then um moving on here because. I don't waste my time, do we have any detail of what to do from governments, this? You know, it's a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, and it would, to me, I think we should have some. Some detail should be right in the uh, the accounting records, should be able to print that out. But it's not an insignificant amount of money. Um, I'm assuming nobody can speak to that, but provide me with the information, I I would appreciate that. Uh, my last question on this page has to do with current liabilities. Um, and and maybe that's the difference between current liabilities and long-term liabilities. Uh, anywhere on this sheet, do we show the uh obligation that the district has incurred to? Uh, pay Eden Curry uh with respect to the bridge over. Uh, is it duck like we're running like, I keep getting those confused.
Duck like?
So is is that reflected or obligation reflected there at all?
It's an expense that we incur on an annual basis.
Well, it it would it would seem to me that that's something that should be considered. Perhaps uh reflecting on the balance sheet, if not a current liability, uh, a long-term liability. The the current year exposed would be a current liability, the future years, I assume, would be a long-term, but I'm not gonna be.
We get we get an invoice, we get an invoice from them, and then we pay it, so.
Well, if you have a long-term liability, you don't need an invoice, but. Yeah. I'll leave it at that for for this point. My last uh comment is my ongoing comment that. You know, I I believe that uh we should be recording in the books the actual supplier. Of the uh items that are charged to credit accounts and not the credit account company. I don't believe that that's a a best practice. Um, I realize it's not a huge amount of money, but it's not also insignificant and without. Listing the vendor, it it's uh, well. Very difficult to track, you know, where the money is going on a. On a monthly, quarterly, or annual basis without having to do a lot of work and. Seems to me be challenge auditing anything, also point out that I believe the word vehicles being misspelled. Um, uh, there, and. Uh, my last question is, what is the LinkedIn paid promotion? That's the last item under the general administrative total.
Managers, I can speak to that, um, that is um a boosting effectively that you pay for with LinkedIn beyond the free service. Um, that advertises it to many more people, um, and it, we ended up with about thirty-five LinkedIn applications because of that.
There's an excuse me, thirty-five LinkedIn applications for?
For the administrative assistant position.
Oh, I I see, as as a way of uh finding talent or applicants for the talent, so is this a limited time? Uh. Uh, service that we buy?
Um, yes, you pay for it on a on a daily basis, and so when the application closed, we stopped paying for that.
Okay, very good, thank you, that was very helpful, I I appreciate that, um, let me see. Um. So on on the uh page four of four. Um. Good news is is that apparently we're getting lots of interest off of our uh investment funds. Investment re- results. Um, can you, someone tell me under professional services? What those professional services have been so far this year? What they were been for? Is it totally your to date of forty-six hundred dollars? If nobody knows, we can, we can move on. And and then I have two last questions. That has to do with Middle Riley Creek, what do we have left to do with Middle Riley Creek? Uh, it's yeah, it can you feel a little bit like gum on the shoe, seriously, we can't get rid of it.
President Sigler, Manager Cook, uh, Middle Riley Creek is in the vegetation establishment period. So there'll be two more years of contractor required vegetation monitoring and establishment.
Okay, so we split this out from the the larger contract? That the construction contract?
The vegetation establishment is part of the construction contract.
Okay, but what, oh. We're just using the two twenty-three budget, okay, I I apologize, I understand now, a similar question with Saint Hubert's. Project, is this something different than the project we already paid for, or is this?
President Sigler, Manager Cook, it is the project that the district already paid for and constructed, there is continuing vegetation establishment there. Um, the kind that the contractor is responsible for as well.
Okay, thank you, I yield back.
Okay, any other questions on the? Excuse me, the Treasurer's Report? Do we have a roll call vote, please, on uh accepting the Treasurer's Report?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Deval?
Yes.
Andrew Cook?
No.
Manager Pedersen?
Yes.
President Sigler?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you. So the next item we have is the Resolution twenty-three dash zero three six to approve paying the bills.
I'll move that we. I'll move that we pay the bills, pay that resolution.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, do we have any questions on this item? Do we have a roll call vote, please, Mister Smith?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Deval?
Yes.
Andrew Cook?
Yes.
Manager Pedersen?
Yes.
President Sigler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, we have a discussion item here on Rule A. Uh, Resolution.
Mister President.
I'm sorry, is there?
We have Resolution twenty-three zero three seven. Concerning the summer tour. That was the one we.
Okay.
And Mister President?
Manager cook?
I move that we adopt Resolution number twenty-three dash zero three seven.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, is this, thank you, is this the resolution that we had some debate over what exactly it does, can we? Yes, look at that again.
Mister President?
Mister Smith?
The earlier discussion was that we would amend the resolution. Um, and simply say to attend the twenty-twenty-three summer tour. Of Minnesota Watersheds. So we would delete authorization for any future annual meeting. And the legislative conference, which has already been held.
Is that acceptable to, I forget who made the motion and seconded it now?
Manager Cook and Manager Crafton?
Well, no, Mister President. I believe this was in, I again, if Mister Jeffrey was here, I can only surmise. That he was thinking since we. Do these events every year. That we would have this ongoing resolution. Uh, so that we don't have to have it keep coming back. Uh, every year, as you recall, last year, we got in a. I don't know what the right adjective is about authorizing the payments and making payments and the credit card issues. And I just think that, you know, it makes perfectly good sense, we, these are all things we've always, at least my tenure, we paid for. And if we want to change it anytime, we can always adopt a resolution, say, nope, no more. On that basis, so I just think it makes good sense and eliminates having to go through this, you know, year after year. Doesn't stop us from addressing it at a year and say, nope, sorry, regardless of what we said before, we're not gonna do it. But I think this just streamlines our administration.
President Sigler?
Manager Crafton?
Yeah, I, okay, so I'm fine with that, I just wanted to make sure that we knew what we were. All the events that we were signing up for here, but I'm I'm fine with that, those points.
Well, I I guess I'm a little nervous, we maybe should put a cap on it the for this year. You know, so we don't uh, otherwise it should be maybe in the uh. The bylaws or something. You know, that this is our practice. Seems like making it a resolution that isn't printed in the bylaws. Um, you know, it's easy to lose it.
Okay, wait. President Sigler?
Manager Crafton?
Um, there is a time constraint here, I mean, we want to be able to move on this, but. I mean, it's pretty explicit saying authorizing the district administrator to expend district funds to register and provide needed room and board for managers to attend regularly scheduled. Minnesota Association of Watersheds events. So. It would be the summer tour, and then it would be the annual meeting in December.
Right, but it doesn't, on this, it doesn't show an end date, so it would be. Uh, not just this year, but next year and the following year, and and maybe that's okay. But it seems like it, that probably is a. Conversation we should wait until our administrators back to talk about. We can do it for this year, that's. I guess what I'm proposing is uh just putting in a date. Uh, you know, after Association of Watersheds for. Uh.
Two thousand twenty-three?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mister Cook, Manager Cook, is that acceptable with you?
Well. Uh, difficult to say considering Administrator Jeffrey isn't here, I. I've already said I don't have a problem with it the way it's drafted, because we can always say no. Uh, you know, at a later date, and it's it's well defined, uh. You guys want to amend the motion, you can amend the motion, but I I'm fine with the way it reads, right?
Just so I'm clear, you're fine with us amending the motion?
If if you want to move and amend the motion, then we'll we'll have a vote on that, and we'll go from there.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to amend the. Um. Resolution to put a date to twenty twenty-three. So that, um, you know, we can review it farther. With Administrator Jeffrey before we uh make it a policy.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion to amend and a second, do we have any more discussion? Can we have a roll call vote on this, Mister Smith?
Andrew Crafton?
No.
Manager? No?
Yes.
Andrew Cook?
No.
Andrew Pedersen?
No.
So I'm gonna vote yes, obviously it failed.
Three, yeah.
So the motion on the table is to approve it, you know, as written. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, um. Just to for the record, then, um, Manager Cook made the motion, Manager Crafton seconded the motion, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? During then, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Deval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Manager Pedersen?
Yes.
President Sigler?
Yeah, I'm gonna vote no, but it baffles anyway.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you. Okay, so um. That wasn't listed on my agenda, so what's next on the official agenda?
Discussion items.
So discussion item is on Rule A and Resolution to. Twenty nineteen dash zero zero five permit review and transfer?
Correct.
So have you uh prepared anything on this, uh, Mister Soviet?
There was information provided in the packet, I have not prepared any information, um. I believe one of the managers was asking questions about uh the ability for the administrator to do renewals or transfers.
Manager Cook, is that you?
Uh, yes, Mister President, that was I.
Okay. So, do you want to lead us through this, then?
Sure, uh, uh, the reason I asked that it be. Put on the agenda to discuss is because I think it. It it bears on uh item that's gonna be before us, which is uh, you know, Noble Hills, but. Uh, you know, Rule A as a a couple of issues to me. I didn't, and again, I'm not gonna claim to be the expert, you know, I didn't draft it on that basis, I did read read through it. I didn't see in Rule A, A, the the ability to. For the district to delegate, you know, responsibility for making decisions, you know, to staff, now. I believe I'm correct on that, that said, I know that uh Mister Jeffrey had provided me with a copy of the. Resolution twenty nineteen dash zero zero five, which did include um. An authorization for the administrator to approve certain. Permits, including uh permit uh extensions. And um, the reason I raise this is because I would like to have uh. Legal counsel review this to see if uh Mister Jeffrey actually had the legal authority. To extend uh applications. Um, especially if there's been a a a transfer. And um, I would like us to have a discussion in their view of changing Rule A. Or at least changing the resolution. Uh, to provide that. Uh, managers to be given a certain number of days advance notice of any proposed. Uh, extension of a permit, so that. So that we would have, be able to uh, have the extension brought before us for discussion and determination of whether or not to uh, extend the uh, e- extend the permit application. So that, this is the reason I, I raised it. I think we may need legal counsel to look at this and, and weigh in it and uh, advise us as to uh, the legal authority to delegate. Uh, not in, the reason I bring this up is, seems to me that approving extensions, et cetera, and other uh, items that are purported to be delegated or delegated to the administrator um, might not be delegable under the terms of the uh, rules, as I did not find, and maybe I missed it, but Mr. Smith would likely know, or Mr. Welch likely know if we have a specific provision in our rules that allow for delegation of approval of authority. Uh, I think there's some question as to whether or not we can uh, amend the rules by a resolution without going through the uh, rule process. So that's why I asked that beyond every, because I think it is pertinent to uh, you know, all requests for extensions and renewals that we uh, receive. And I'm thinking that we should at least have the ability to weigh in before a uh, a permit is extended, in case there's new information, et cetera. That we want to address in connection with it. It's my understanding that under, at least under the law, our, our rules may be different. There is no automatic right to an, an extension. So uh, but we do have rules that talk about that.
Um, Mr. President?
You have? Yeah.
Um, just to respond uh, to Manager Cook's uh, questions and comments. Rule A provides for actions to be taken in issuing permits or renewing permits by the district. It's not explicitly uh, referring to the Board of Managers having that authority. We did um, carefully look at Rule A as we um, crafted for the Board's review Resolution 2019 oh five. So in our view, um, that resolution did delegate the renewal authority to the administrator. It is perfectly appropriate for the Board to reconsider that resolution or modify it, um, such as asking for, requiring advanced notice when renewals are coming forward. That all is in order and, and appropriate to consider.
President Ziegler?
Manager Crafton?
Yeah, when we passed this and we did give that authority to the, delegated that authority to our administrator. We were, I don't know if you'd call it under attack, but there was a lot of concern by the commissioners of the counties and some of the cities as to how quickly we were turning around the permits. And it's pretty specific as to exactly which ones, where the authority goes, I mean, which ones are allowed. Um, those are laid out on page one and um, so I mean, it's, we only meet once a month generally, so it's just really hard to get things done in a timely manner and not be holding up. You know, the permits and, and allowing our businesses or whoever the constituents are that are going for an approval just to make that a length, a lengthy process. So um, there was, there was a lot of concern and I, I, I think it's valid. I think we want to turn this around. We want to be supportive as long as they're in compliance with our rules and um, Engineer Sobeck's doing a good job of trying to make sure people are in compliance and it's a complex thing, but I think this, I, I thought this was a smart move at the time that we did it and I thought it was extremely helpful.
Mr. Sobeck, can you scroll to the top of this and then, then through the three pages so we can quickly review it? Can you slow down a second and start? So it, on four, it says the administrator may not approve an application if the administrator determines that the application involves technical policy or legal issues, raise warrants. I guess I thought there was something in here about uh, uh, public uh, opinion. You know, if it was going to be a controversial issue. Maybe I made a mistake.
Oh, Mr. President? I, I believe paragraph D, uh, paragraph B, for B, addresses that, but it's unclear whether that applies to uh, applications, that is, application for a new permit, application for a renewal, uh, it's unclear. And, you know, unfortunately, I think the administrator and the managers may have differences of opinion. And that's why I'm suggesting we consider uh, a change to the rules that would be for, certainly before a renewal uh, of a permit that uh, we be given, we managers be given notice and the opportunity then to have it addressed as a meeting as opposed to allowing the administrator to uh, make the decision. I just think it's, it, again, because the administrator may have differences of opinion and if we're not notified, we have no ability to uh, bring it to the full Board attention uh, prior to it being uh, approved. And as I also said, I, I do have some, I, I'm not sure that the law's clear as to what can be delegated and can't uh, be delegated, uh, and particularly uh, under, you know, a set of rules. Especially given the fact that I know this rule process took a long time. And uh, you know, that is kind of a rule of construction. Now, if you took that long and you didn't address it, you must not have intended to, you know, to address it. So um, I think it's, it's worth uh, worth reviewing this, uh, and I think it's worth reviewing all the rules sooner rather than later for a lot of other reasons because we have uh, was it Chan Heston and another one coming up in 2025? And it would take us until then to be able to get our rules revised, I think, in order for them to be applicable to the cities when they renew their um, there was the surface water management plan, I think that they have to have. So I, and let me just finish. I, I don't know that there needs to be, you know, any particular action. And maybe this is just too fresh to really have any discussion and think people need to look at it and I think, you know, getting some input from, you know, legal counsel and the administrator and Mr. Sobeck uh, would be important. But I do, my final thing is like to address Manager Crafton's comment. You know, quite frankly, you know, I'm all in favor of assisting permittees for applicants to get the process done. But you know, I've read enough of the um, engineers reports that applications aren't, you know, complete. They haven't provided information, et cetera. So I am reluctant to cut much slack to applicants when we've got a very straightforward process and procedure. Uh, we have communications. They know what it is. And I'm not inclined to to short shrift the appropriate uh, effort and time of review just because somebody neither didn't get their act together uh, on that basis. And if somebody has sat on their hands and the year's up, well, that's not our problem. So.
So Mr. Sobeck, can you add this issue to the uh, maybe the workshop? Uh, this, that's worth a minute and a half because it, it seems like, you know, I, especially that paragraph B, considering the uh, Noble Hill project. And um, you know, one of the things is the administrator determines that the application involves a technical policy or legal issue or raises the public comment that warrants review of the application by the Board of Managers. So it seems like um, seems like that would have uh, raised a red flag on uh, this particular permit, which we administratively approved the uh, extension of.
President Ziegler, I will work with Administrator Jeffrey to get this in on the workshop.
Okay, thank you. Is there any more discussion on this item or are we ready to move on?
Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
Um, I'm ready to move on, but I'd like to move uh, a revision of the agenda and I would like us to uh, it, the agenda, and I'd like us to go into closed session to discuss the uh, possible acquisition of the properties. Uh, like, again, I, somebody will fill those in, uh, so we can uh, uh, have a short discussion there. And exchange for that, I will lay over any further discussion of my manager report until next meeting.
Okay, um, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
President Ziegler?
Manager Crafton?
Yeah, I guess it's a question for Council Smith. Is there more updates that we should be aware of?
Mr. President, managers, uh, I'm not aware of any updates as of now.
Okay.
Well, Mr. President?
We're maybe not aware of? Manager Cook?
Again, it's unfortunate that Administrator uh, Jeffrey isn't here. Um, in, in light of that, um, you know, I'd like to uh, I'd like to move that we recess this uh, meeting until six PM on uh, six PM next Wednesday. So that we can uh, possibly address this issue once Mr., if Mr. Jeffrey will be available. Uh, I have questions and I'd like to hear from Mr. Pressman at that time um, to, so we can either keep this going or you know, put it to bed.
Okay, can you repeat the date and time?
Sure, next Wednesday. Oh, yeah, I was thinking about doing the workshop. I'm sorry. How about next Wednesday at seven PM? Does that work for people?
I, I don't think so. I'm, I'm coming back from a job site where I have an hour and some away and I, I can't say I'd be able to make that.
But, but, excuse me, Mr. President, can I continue?
Uh, yeah.
I was just gonna ask to, Manager Patterson, is there a time or date next week that would work for you?
I,
I, I realize this is your busy.
Yeah.
Like, like my tax was.
Yeah.
I, I appreciate that. I mean, I, 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 I'm not locked into a particular time necessarily, so if you want to throw something out.
Uh, I, I'm, I'm like to Friday now of next week.
Well, let's, let's set it Friday then of next week. I think it's better than waiting longer.
I, I just, I'd like to know that there's actually something for us to work on. I mean, that we have something, so I don't know whether or not anybody that's here in attendance at the meeting can tell us. Are we going to have anything by then or what?
Oh, oh.
Mr. Smith has a thing there.
Okay.
Mr. President, managers, I, I did discuss yesterday with Mr. Jeffrey the general status of this and the uh, understanding I had is that it was his intention that the May eighteenth work session would be an occasion to take this up.
Okay.
I just offer that. I, I understand the Board may wish to schedule something early, but I, I wanted to share that much.
Well, Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
I, I would still, well, I think the eighteenth is a long ways away if we're going to be, be working on this. I would, I would like to at least, uh, you know, hear from Mr. Pressman, uh, et cetera, and, and where we're at and maybe it only takes a takes a short period of time. Um, but by recessing, we don't have to do notices again. That's the, that's the reason I'm saying recess date. If it turns out that doesn't work, we don't have a quorum, we don't have a quorum, and we can, you know, lay it over for a, you know, a later date. And my only reason is I'd just like to move, move this on. Not have that language.
President Ziegler?
Manager Crafton?
I've got a bunch of things on my schedule too. I just, um, I prefer to wait to the workshop since we've already got something scheduled for that date.
So are we saying we can continue it for the same day as the workshop?
Hello, Mr. President?
Yes.
I'll, I'll, I'll amend my motion to recess this meeting until uh, six PM on the eighteenth.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? So I'll, I'll second it so we can get to a vote. So uh, I guess there's still uh, upcoming events. I guess we really already covered the the one, but there's a wakeboard study on uh, May thirty first.
Is it Ziegler?
Manager Crafton?
Do we have to vote on this?
We do. I'm just trying to, once we do this, we'll continue it, right? When we're done? And I think I'd like to let the managers all know that there's a University of Minnesota uh, update on the wakeboat study that's on uh, May thirty first. You can ask Administrator Jeffrey to send the information uh, to all the managers. Um, it's a free uh, Zoom meeting. But uh, it seems like something, you know, we need to stay current on.
Well, Mr. President, I agree.
Manager Cook?
Oh, so should we call the vote on the continuance?
Uh, yeah. Mr. Smith, can we have a roll call vote on the continuing? Mr. Smith, can we have, uh, roll call vote on the continuance?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Andrew Patterson?
Yes.
President Ziegler?
Yeah.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, was there anything that anybody else needed to say before we, uh. End this session and. Something that doesn't need. We can't wait until, uh. The, uh, continuance? So hearing none, we already voted to continue. Is there anything else we need to do, Mr. Smith?
All good?
Thank you all.
Okay.
Thank you all. Good night.
Night. Thank you, Scott.
Thanks.